Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, May 6, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
She is excused.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Freeman.
She's also excused tonight.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
And Youth Counselor Ferris.
Here.
Thank you all. If you are able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roland and Marlene is going to handle that. Thank you. All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Council, before we get underway, I would like to ask if you would agree with a change in our agenda to move Item 8B, the resolution supporting PERS' long-term liability relief for public services, up to 4B, so Counselor Sal Peralta can make the presentation earlier on in the agenda. Any objections? All right. We will move, make that change in the agenda. And with that, I would like to go to our first order, Special Order of Business, which is the Career Technical Education Center Student Spotlight. And with us tonight, we have Linda Yanoz. If you want to come on down to the testimony table, and I will read this brief introduction. The Career Technical Education Center is in partnership with the Salem-Kaiser School District and prepares students for high-skill, high-wage, high-demand careers while developing the skills, technical knowledge, academic foundation, and real-world experience to assure their success upon graduation. Counselor Herrera and I serve on the advisory board for the Career Technical Education Center, and we as a city are excited to recognize another CTEC student for her amazing work and celebrate her learning success. Linda Yanoz is a CTEC Video Game and Animation Design Program student, and one of her teachers submitted the following testimonial. Linda is responsible, determined, a great self-manager and advocate, and strives toward meeting her goals every day. Welcome, Linda.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. This is such a huge honor.
Would you tell us a little bit about the program you're in and if you're a first or second-year student?
I am a first-year student, and so the program that I am in is 3D video game design. And going into this program, I thought that this was just going to be a program solely focused on designing video games and coding, but this actually, this program actually covered a more broad aspect to what I had first anticipated. And it covers digital cinema, so we learn about the process of movie making, you know, what we need to do, so like script writing. We go over animation, how to model things, how to turn, take that and put it into an environment. We take, we learn concept drawing, how to put things in perspective and really bring our drawings to life. And we, we really get deep into all the, how would I word this, the kind of micro, small details rather than the general pretty picture. And I just think that this program is absolutely amazing, and everything that it has to offer is truly a beautiful thing.
Well, it sounds like you are very enthusiastic for the work, and it sounds like you also bring 100% every day. Do you have some family with you today that you'd like to introduce?
I do. I have my mom, my dad, and my little brother with me today.
Hi. So nice to meet you. You know, at signing night, it was important for all the parents to be there to support their students, and we're so glad that, to know that Linda and all the students have support like you for her success.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. We're honored to be part of such a great, oh.
We're glad to have you here. You're awesome.
It's a pleasure for us to be here, and thank you for that support.
You bet. Counselor Herrera.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just so you know, they're also the parents of Crystal Yanoz, who is Stanford University, and that's her young sister. By the way, she's only a junior, and so the signing thing's a little ways away, but it's pretty exciting. I mean, what you just explained there is like way over my head, but I was going to say, un-geek that for me, would you? But, but you know what? It's exciting that you're really into it, and according to your teacher and your instructors, you're amazing. And we want to continue to follow you on your success, okay? And thank you very much. Don't forget, when you're done down the road, to come back and help our other kids, just like your sister does.
Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Linda, just a couple quick questions. Had you been playing with computers much before you entered the CTEC program?
I actually hadn't. Going into CTEC, I was very new to all of the computer technical stuff aspect of it, and I was very nervous because I thought, oh, what if I'm not good enough and they don't like my work? But it was very relieving to go in there and for a lot of teachers to tell me that you don't need to worry, don't need to stress. Everybody goes in at different levels, and you will learn everything at your own pace, and you will need to... Everybody goes in at different levels, and you will learn everything at your own pace and you will need to. And it was very relieving, and it just lifted a huge weight off my shoulders, knowing that even if I wasn't at the same level as some of my other peers, they still thought that I had very great work to present, and they really saw my ideas and what I was going for.
And are you a video game player?
I am. I do play a lot of video games, and that's where I do grasp a lot of my ideas and stories from.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much, and we want to wish you all the best as you continue your studies. Thank you for letting us celebrate you and your accomplishments, and I look for your name to be in the screen credits some days. And so what are, what's your career goal?
My career, I hope to go to, probably work at Disney, be an animator, and really work behind the scenes.
And before we convene tonight, I told her that I know of another student from Kaiser who was doing exactly that. So we have a lot of talent here. The path has already been blazed because people know that talented kids come from Kaiser. Thank you so much. All the best.
Thank you so much for having me.
Oh, I'm talking about, I was in, Smith. Really? That's two. Okay. So I heard about two. Fantastic. Yes, okay. Yes, I do. In the meantime, so what I would like to do is call up Counselor Sal Peralta, who's going to talk about the, about the PERS issue, as every single public agency is painfully aware, and we have just completed our budget process. PERS and the unfunded liability from the state is continuing to play a major role in reducing our ability to fund programs in our general fund. It's an unfunded mandate, but it is mandate nonetheless. So I appreciate you being here tonight to share with us some of the ideas going forward to make sure that all agencies, including cities, are going to be considered in any solutions. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me okay?
Hold that mic up, if you would.
This is a problem in our council chambers. People are always hassling me about speaking up into the mic. So if you can hear me okay, that's great. This is only the second time I've been in your City Hall. I've been to a lot of city halls around the state, and this is by far one of the most beautiful ones that I've been to. So congratulations to Kaiser on the investment in this property. I'm kind of jealous, to be honest with you. As Mayor Clark mentioned, I'm a city counselor in McMinnville, and I'm also the interim deputy director for PERS Solutions for Public Services. Our organization is an information resource for individuals and organizations from across the state who are working to advance cost-sharing reforms to the state's public pension system with the intention of reducing the impact of PERS on taxpayer budgets, ensuring competitive retirement benefits, and working conditions for our public employees, and preserving and enhancing vital public services. I'm just going to dive right into the problem that we're facing just overall as a state with regard to this. And you may have seen some of this in the media. But currently statewide, the total unfunded liability for the public pension system is $26.6 billion. That increased $4.3 billion in 2018 due to a relatively low performance of the fund. It increased to half a percent last year. It needs to increase to just break even about seven and a half to eight percent per year or more. For every Oregon household, that's $15,900 for each public employee. That's $153,700 on a statewide basis. In terms of how it's affecting budgets, the historic rate for PERS from 1975 to 2015, which includes some really expensive years in there, especially in the early part of the 2000s, was 12%. So that's sort of the baseline for PERS costs on a statewide basis. Currently, we're around 21% as a state, and by the 21-23 biennium, we're going to be at 31.2% going to above 33% as a state. So the impact on payroll is considerable. That money comes out of government budgets, the general fund budgets for any government unit that is impacted by these costs, and it has a significant impact on staffing levels. This year, you may have heard that the governor and the legislature are on the verge of passing a fairly large revenue package. The revenue package that they've been talking about to date only provides funding for state agencies and schools. As you can see, the column on the left-hand side is the amount of new revenue that's expected to be generated through the revenue package. The second column with the light blue and the light orange reflects the amount of money that is going to both PERS costs for schools and PERS costs for the state of Oregon. As you can see, in the 19, the current biennium, the, they're going to be about $1 billion to the good with about 40% of the total cost being absorbed by the pension fund. But over the next eight years, you can see that the share of that new revenue getting eaten up by the cost of these pensions increases significantly to the point that it's about 80% of the total revenue coming into the state. And again, none of this helps local governments. It's just going to the school fund and to the state fund. So it's going to be an expensive eight years for all Oregon governments. We're talking about a total projected increase above 2017 and 2018 of $10.2 billion, 3.3 billion to K through 12 schools, 3 billion to state universities, and 3.9 billion to cities, counties, community colleges, fire districts, and other smaller special districts. In terms of Kaiser's budget, I took a quick look before I came out. I did send a sheet with four charts on it for the city of Kaiser. I didn't include it on this slide presentation. But in 2017, 2019, the cost was, the city of Kaiser's share of pension costs was $1.7 million by '21-'23, so that's a four-year window. It's going to be 3.2 million, so that's nearly a doubling in cost over a four-year period that you will have to absorb. So what can and should be done? By the way, this slide deck that I'm presenting tonight is a redacted version of a 70 or 80-piece slide deck that goes into a lot of detail about the history and so on. I'm not going to go into all of that. I'm just going to talk about the problem and what are, what we think the solutions are to address it. So legally, the Morrow decision, which was from 2015 when the legislature attempted to make some changes to the pension system, clarified what can be done going forward. Essentially, Morrow determined that we need to keep the promise of benefits for employees earned to date, but that changes may be made going forward. Benefits to earn, to be earned in the future with limited exceptions are modifiable, and employee contributions can be established for pension benefits going forward. So those are the two paths that are available to deal with the portion of the unfunded liability, which is about a third of the total cost related to current employees. In terms of the goals for PERS reform, we think the main goal should be to reduce the system's rising claims on budgets for the purpose of protecting public services. We need to do more with, more with more with new revenues, whether that revenue is coming from the growth of the economy or from establishing new taxes, things that we could do with additional revenue, adding back school days for K through 12, reducing class sizes, increasing starting salaries. In terms of the community college impact, and by the way, community colleges are hugely impacted by this. Chameca Community College laid off 31 people in the current biennium, and about half of the cost of that, according to their budget director, was due to increased PERS costs, the other being declining enrollments at Chameca. We can moderate tuition increases, increase need-based financial aid in community colleges and universities, enhance public health and public safety. I mean, for cities, our city is looking at potentially layoffs over the next time period. So we're really wanting to do what we can to make sure that we're able to retain and as much staff as we possibly can. But we need to manage these ongoing costs and remaining liabilities so we don't place an undue burden on the next generation of Oregonians, which over the next 20 years are going to be bearing most of these costs. So there are some options for cost-sharing reforms, cost-saving reforms going forward. Reinstate employee cost sharing. We had employee cost sharing on the pension prior to 2003. That went away when the legislature created the new OP-SERP or Tier 3 pension. Modify future pension benefit accruals, beginning with the features of Tier 1 and Tier 2. Begin rebalancing the system, either a pension plan or a retirement savings plan for public employees, but not both. And we need to recover legacy costs from re-employed retirees, which we can talk about. So there is a case for employee cost sharing. This chart is from, from the National Association of Certified Public Accountants. I'm going to get that name wrong, but it's essentially the group that administers these public pension benefits across the various states. And you can see on the very far left-hand side of the chart, that little piece there is Oregon, and that shows the average Oregon employee contribution to locally and state-administered defined benefit pension systems. And you can see in Oregon, it's pretty close to zero. Public employees contribute to their own side account, 401K-style side account, but they don't contribute to their own defined benefits pension, and Oregon is the only state in the country where that is the case. And you can see that makes a difference in terms of how these pensions are administered. Nationally, in 2016, employer costs were about 13.3% of payroll. Employee costs, average contribution was about 6%. That's on a national basis. So here's the same chart with the Oregon numbers in orange. In 2016-17, employers were paying 17.5%, currently 20.85% on average, going up to 25.23 next year, while public employees on the defined benefit plan pay zero, with the national average being 5% to 6%. So we did, there were some polling done earlier this week by DHM surveys, and they wanted to know what Oregonians think about PERS reform. And so they had several questions on their survey, which is available at the DHM website. You can just Google that if you're interested. But the three main things that I pulled out for this presentation was that there's a lot of public support for keeping the current PERS system, but requiring employees to contribute 6% of their salaries to help pay for pension benefits is required prior to 2004. 68% of Oregonians support that, 22% in the survey opposed. 77% believe we should make changes to PERS to reduce the system's costs for governments in the future but protect retirement benefits earned to date by employees. And 72% favor replacing the current system with a new defined benefit, defined contribution system, like a 401K plan, where employees and the employer each contribute a share of the employee's salary totaling 12%. That was 72% reform, I mean, support for reform. So there's a lot of public support for changes. So the question is, what does a framework for change look like that's fair and that can actually have an impact on these costs? First, we need to reduce the going-forward costs without retreating to substandard retirement benefits for public employees. Second, reduce legacy costs within the legal limits. For example, through the Work Back Pay Back Plan that we've talked about at the legislature. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Limit the growth of long-term liabilities by aligning the contribution rates to investment returns and salary experience. And manage the remaining liabilities to smooth out the impact on future generations. So each of those four areas are things that we've taken on at the legislature, both from a conceptual and a specific policy standpoint. In 2019, in terms of cost sharing, we introduced, or we worked with legislators to introduce Senate Bill 148, which would reinstate the cost sharing at 6% in all employee plans, expand the side account to create an alternative defined contribution plan, and allow employees to choose a pension plan or a defined contribution plan, but not both, and continue to allow the employer pickup. If we were to have, if that legislation was to have moved forward in this session, you would have seen basically about half of the costs being reduced going forward for employees, half of the increase in costs going forward. But that's not where we're at. Where we're at is we have two, two options on the table that the governor and the co-chairs have put forward. The governor has suggested that employees should contribute between 1.5% to 3% of their annual salary for, for employees who earn above $20,000. That would decrease the going-forward employer cost by 15%. The co-chairs had a similar proposal that is, they've just been releasing, and that would apply to employees who make above $30,000 annual salary. And for OP-SERP employees, it would be a 0.75% contribution and up to 2% for tiers 1 and 2. That would decrease the going-forward employer cost by about 13%. And then there are three initiative petitions that Governor Kulungoski and former state Senator Chris Telfer have filed that are variations on these themes, the, and that each of, each of which will, depending on which, which initiative goes forward, reduce employers' costs by about a third to just under 60%. And I can go into more detail about any of those specific plans, but just for time, I'm going to move forward. Another concept that we've discussed at the legislature is a Work Back Pay Back Plan. This would allow Tier 1 and Tier 2 employees who are currently retirement-eligible to continue working for up to five years, draw salary and a retirement allowance, but they would contribute from their salary, and the employer would contribute to buy down the jurisdiction's UAL. And that proposal would also direct the employer and employee contributions to buy down the, the liability, the unfunded liability. So that's one bill that is still, has a lot of traction. And as I mentioned, there are a couple of other bills that are under consideration to address some of these costs. In terms of managing the remaining liabilities, some things that have been considered at the legislature has been lengthening the amortization period. Currently, it's 20 years. They're talking about increasing it to 30. Rate freezes, which again, would have kind of a lengthening of costs. As the mayor mentioned, there's been consideration for specific state assistance for schools and local governments, which have not been, to this point, considered for extending to local cities. And then finally, prioritizing programs targeted for assistance. So just a few key takeaways. First is that we've had a strong economy. We've had a strong economy for several years, and we should be doing better than this as a state in terms of getting ahead with regard to state and local budgets. And the worst is yet to come in terms of the impacts of these, even if the economy remains strong. In about four years is we're going to hit the worst part of it as a state. And for jurisdictions that set up a side, a side account to help pay down their liability, which is several of the school districts, in 2029, most of those side accounts will expire. So for several of those districts, they're going to get another bump in about four years that is, no, excuse me, in 2027, 2029, that is going to be substantial, substantial. So when you hear that these costs are going down, they are. But in about, in several of the districts that set up those side accounts, they're still going to be feeling a lot of pain. All of us are going to be feeling a lot of pain for about 20 years. That's just where we're at right now as a state. So it's not the fault of the public employees. I mean, you know, people should get a pension that they're, you know, they're just getting the pension they've been offered, but, but there are excesses in the system that we need to correct going forward. And unfortunately, there's nothing that your city council, my city council, any school board, county government can do. It's all up to the state legislature, and that's why I'm here tonight to ask for your council to support the resolution, to ask the legislature to take action. It doesn't have to be any of the specific reforms that I've mentioned tonight. Those, that's a framework that we've laid out. Some of those are under consideration. But we really need them to address these costs, and we're asking for your support on that. And just finally, there is a clear legal path forward for PERS reforms to manage a portion of this liability. And with that, my presentation is done. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And I know that was an absolute speed read on a very, very complex, complex, no, no, there's a lot of it. It was very clear. But this is a complex issue that we've seen many attempts to, to, you know, find some way to keep our current budgets whole and to keep our employees and their pensions whole. And that's been a very tough road to navigate. So I appreciate the thought that's gone into this. Counselors, questions? So in our packets tonight is a resolution, and there's a revised one on our table that had updated information for our consideration to support other local jurisdictions and the League of Oregon Cities, who is also working very hard on this issue regarding how to find that balance to make sure that we're, we have fiscal responsibility and comply with all of the contracts that we have with all of our employees, our public employees who absolutely earned everything that they've got in their retirements. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just as the mayor mentioned, whoever the mover is, the motion, please refer not to the resolution in the packet, but the resolution that you have in front of you as the substitute resolution. That was after the packet deadline, so just as part of the record, if you could do that.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2019, the one on the dais, urging the Oregon Legislature to enact public employee retirement system, PERS reforms that reduce pension costs for public employers, and approving City of Kaiser's Membership in the PERS Solutions for Public Services Coalition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, urging the Oregon Legislature to enact public employee retirement system, PERS reforms that reduce pension costs for public employers, and approving City of Kaiser's membership in PERS Solutions for Public Services Coalition. Comments, discussion? Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out, first of all, that as a city council, we are making and putting nothing into PERS, and so we have no vested interest in this, other than the fact that many of us are drawing on PERS through our regular jobs, and so we see both sides of this. And, you know, we, we understand what it costs to run a city. We also understand, as public employees, what that looks like on the other end. So I guess, basically, an assurance that this is an objective sort of decision that we're making.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Reed, because that reminds me that although it's a bit of a stretch, I think there's at least a couple of members that should declare a potential conflict of interest with regard to this resolution. It's pretty indirect, but that, and that's what would be my suggestion.
So I'll go ahead and start, since my husband is a tier-one retiree and I am tier-three. I work for the state of Oregon.
Ditto.
Yes, except for I think I'm tier-two. So, I think.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Coler, it's Counselor Coler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am not a public employee. However, I am concerned about a lot of friends of mine that are public employees. So how would that affect our city employees? This, this particular resolution, how would that affect our city employees?
In the short term, this is to encourage work toward stabilizing the PERS system and ensuring that cities are included in this conversation. There's been legislation going forward that would exclude cities and counties and any other districts other than education from benefiting from solutions that the, the state works out. How would it affect the employees? It really depends on how the sausage is made in the final solution for this system. However, we have seen time and time again, when the legislature has attempted to make any changes to the PERS systems, if it doesn't comply with all contractual obligations, it's in court, and those contractual obligations are upheld, which is something I would completely support. A contract is a contract is a contract. That's just me. Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you, Sal, for bringing this to the front. We all know that it's a problem, and we, I feel like it's something good that we're encouraging the legislature to act upon this. We all know that we have to act on it, and I think if we're united as a city, or city and cities, that would be helpful. So we all see that, and I appreciate you putting this together. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. If you would keep us informed, you have our emails, of course, but also if there's an opportunity for a work session at some point, we would welcome that as well, so we could invite people from our community to also hear what this conversation is shaping up like. It's, it's not new and shiny. It's not, you know, it doesn't get everybody excited about, ooh, we're going to unveil this new thing. It's complicated. It's, it's difficult to navigate, but at the end of the day, when we're looking at providing basic services through our general funds, it affects every single district, every single government in the state that has PERS. So thank you for the work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you. All right. Committee reports. And I have here Matt Lawyer. He's going to talk to us about the Kaiser Little League Long Range Planning Task Force. And also, I asked him if he would talk a little bit about the Claguer Creek Watershed Council Soggy Day at the Park and upcoming volunteer event.
I have 40 slides. Just kidding. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council staff. For the record, Matt Lawyer. First, I want to start with, last month, I was gone towards the end of the month when you presented the volunteer of the quarter to the McNary GROTC, and yeah, I didn't have anything better to do in Matherstow, Oregon, so I watched the city council meeting. It was really, really cool to see those kids up here and get recognized, and so I just really appreciate the council taking the time to do that and making that happen, so.
Well, I found that out. Thank you for writing a letter of recommendation.
It was a long time coming, but. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is the Kaiser Little League Long Range Planning Task Force. I got that wrong, I apologize. We've been meeting since the fall with an objective to try to look at the long-term sustainability of the facility. Not specifically talking about the individual philosophies of any organization, but looking at what the long-range plan is going to be for that facility. As we've seen over the years, it's kind of ebbed and flowed. It started out as sort of the baseball mecca, and then had a couple of rough years, and they've started to sort of bring it back. First couple of meetings were pretty much just going over some ideas and concepts, and then we actually drilled down into the foundation of what I think has proven to become a really, really good plan. At a high level, the organizations and others within the city will come together and create a third entity, probably under a 501(c)(3) at some point. The entity will be a maintenance and operations group that will be entirely responsible for taking care of the facility, and they will work with the organizations, right now, MYB and Kaiser Little League, to do their individual operational needs. The idea is to ensure that slot fees are, or, excuse me, the slot positions are accounted for as much as possible to maximize use for both organizations, as well as other organizations that can come in and utilize the facility and bring revenue to the field. We've been looking at some concessions plans in terms of how to maximize the revenue generated out of concessions, to create incentive for organizations that are part of the Maintenance and Operations Committee, to ensure that they have sort of equal equity in ensuring the concessions are successful. And looking at some long-term goals in terms of things that the, the facility needs to ensure accessibility, ensure safety, among many other things. Right now, the two organizations, Kaiser Little League and MYB, will be undergoing sort of a beta test of the complex facility board, which will be representation of both organizations. They'll work together, along with the city, who's been gracious to partner with them in areas of material, in some cases, and equipment, in other cases, to ensure that the organizations have what they need, to do what they need at the fields. I haven't heard yet how that's going, but I understand they've done some work in the last few weeks, so that's really exciting there. In terms of the equity of the concessions, I think they're going to try to put together a concessions plan. They've hired a sort of concessionaire, so to speak, to run it for this year. The expectation would be, over the next few months, to work with that concessionaire and the two organizations to draft out the initial standard operating procedures for the concessions. We've borrowed the language from the Kaiser Cultural Center and their sort of group, and using that to outline, at a very academic level, what this is going to look like in terms of the structure of the board, the bylaws, and so on and so forth. There's going to have to be some work and some tweaks, but the expectation is to have that ready, I think if we meet in August, if I recall. A couple of things that come along with that, we'll be looking at the, the contract specifically. I think that next calendar year will probably be a good time for the clean split, to get this new organization established and to get those things put in place. We didn't really want to parallel it with the city's fiscal year, because that potentially creates some challenges. But again, that's all yet to be determined exactly when that's going to happen. Lot of really great conversations about how we're going to memorialize the work of all the volunteers that created that facility and everything that's gone on for the last 30-some-odd years, and recognizing the tremendous amount of history that's been, that has gone through that complex. All of the championship teams for Kaiser Little League, for KYSA, for Kaiser Little League, for MYB, for everything, and trying to really memorialize that. There's been some discussions about some other things as well, to, to really transition this to a very successful, very smooth transition. So it's kind of the 10,000-foot view, quick flyby. If there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them or address them as I can.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions on the Kaiser Little League Task Force? Counselor Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to, to thank Matt for all the time and effort and special work that he's done with the, the subcommittee and such, working with all the, the different parties and to, to get it to the point where it is. I appreciate all of your time and effort.
The unique thing, and thank you, Counselor Coler, the unique thing, we actually had a meeting with both boards, which was kind of terrifying. It's like mediating the, the McCoy and the Hatfields, right? Except for it wasn't. It was very graceful. Both organizations were amazing to sit down and talk to. There were some inks, I think, as, as to be expected with any kind of change and the, and the magnitude of the potential change we're looking at. But really, what it boiled down to is they were really excited. I think it's time to bury the hatchet and just move on and, and really sort of reemphasize the focus of what this is supposed to be, and that's opportunities for youth to play baseball and softball in this city. So these, these organizations are awesome. They've, they've pulled up their big boy and girl pants, and they're ready to move forward. So just tremendous amount of appreciation for, for Counsel Parsons and Mayor Clark and Counselor Coler and, and Bill and Chris for all the work they put in and helping out with this as well. It's been, it's been interesting. We're not over. Got a lot of work to do in the next few months, but I'm excited.
Now, I also want to give a shout-out to Counselor Reed. When we redid the bylaws for the Kaiser Heritage Center, Kaiser Heritage Foundation, she was very instrumental in helping us go through, edit them, clean them up, and get them ready for this next iteration, where we now have four organizations working successfully side-by-side in the Kaiser, now, Cultural Center. And again, this is that evolution from the startups to how to get things going, to how do we take the long-range look and be sustainable and responsible, you know, fiscally responsible with a very valuable asset of our community. So I'm excited that these groups have embraced putting together a vision that they're, that together we're crafting it, and this is going to make sure that this facility is well-maintained into the future. So thank you, and that kids can play ball.
So, switching gears, what am I talking about?
Soggy Day.
So Claguer Creek Watershed Council hosted the Second Annual Soggy Day, which was not a soggy day. In fact, it was a cool, cloudy day in the morning, but turned into a beautiful afternoon. Thank you for, the council for helping out with that. We ended up only having to pay the administrative fee, which was very helpful. Just over 200 people, 250 people probably throughout the course of the day. None of us decided to look at a calendar, I think, before we planned the event, and none of us recognized until, I think, the week before that it was Easter weekend, and we'd be competing with every other event in the world, at least on the western hemisphere during that time. So it was nice, you know, as folks were getting out of their Easter egg hunts, they were coming over and checking out what we were doing. You know, Mark Carrier had the boat going nonstop, did a lot of really good tours. I've heard, I don't know, he won't let me on his boat. But, you know, we, we had a great level of participation. Huge shout-out to Scott Air State Farm, who came and did a little information booth, just to kind of talk to folks, and they gave us a nice little donation. And City of Salem Clean Streams actually came out. Stacy, who's our new rep from Salem, has been fantastic, really stepped up her game from what we've seen from Salem in the last few years, so it was really nice to kind of see that. And then we had Mike Adams with Adams Rip Smokehouse come out and give away three hot dogs, and I think that was really exciting. A lot of people, like, everybody likes hot dogs, and they're even better when they're free. And then we had the Bounce House, A to Z Rentals hooked us up with a really good discount on the Bounce House. Then we had Matt from the Parks come out and do the backhoe, and he did such a fantastic job of making sure that it looked safe and everything looked safe, that they thought he was working. So not as much activity this year on the backhoe, because he made it really safe-looking. And so next year, we're going to kind of have to make it less, and I'm just kidding, make it, make it a more desirable place to go. So we've actually, we're working on some signage and other things, but I'll tell you, we had probably no less than five families come down and say, well, what's going on down here? Well, we're getting ready to wrap up this free event. I told you it wasn't a birthday party, and so, again, that's kind of on us, right? We didn't really advertise a lot, and we didn't have a lot of signs, but we still had a good, good level of participation. Kaiser showed out there helping out, some folks from the MAC. I mean, it's just one of those events, it's, it's a lot of fun, very, you know, low maintenance, just a good day. So we are planning it for next year. I think we're going to do on the 18th of April, if I recall, which is not Easter weekend. And we'll get that going again, and, you know, Dorothy Deal is on, on the Watershed Council with us and has been for a long time, and so she's borrowing some of our ideas to take with the 5K Foot Pursuit, which is pretty cool. And so, yeah, that was pretty much it. Just, again, huge shout-out to the City of Kaiser for letting us have it there. It's, it's a lot of fun. And in sort of payback this Saturday, what is this month? May? May 11th, we're going to be out there from about 9:00 to 11:00 or so, and we're going to be cleaning up the base of the arboretum trees. So there's 86 trees out there, so if you're bored and don't have anything better to do at 9:00 in the morning on a Saturday, come out and play with us. We're going to be cleaning up the base of the trees. A student from Whittaker and McNary put together the project plan, so I'm proud of those two young ladies that got that together. And we're going to get a lot of participation, hopefully, from both those schools, as well as Claguer Creek Middle School. So anybody that knows Claguer Creek students, reach out, let them know. I'd like to see a bunch of those folks out there, so I think that's it.
All right. Counselor Reed?
Can you say that date again for that? Is that May 11th, you said? For the?
Yes, May 11th.
The arboretum cleanup?
Yes.
May 11th at 9:00?
May 11th, 9:00, yes.
Okay.
So the arboretum, for those of you who don't know, it's on the, kind of on the south lawn, right there, what's that, Parallel Street, 15th?
Yeah.
No. Yeah, 15th. So it's right there on that, on that path. So if you go to the boat ramp and you see a bunch of people standing around with shovels, that's us. So excited to do that event. I know that we're expecting, you know, as many groups as possible, McNary, Whittaker, Claguer Creek. I know some of the Rotarians will be out there, because that was one of their big projects, so it'll be good.
Well, good. Sounds like a great way to spend a Saturday morning, at least for a little while, and it's a lot less backbreaking than picking up sticks.
This is true.
Yes.
This is very true.
All right. Any questions for Matt? Thank you so much, and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for committee reports. Public testimony? Mr. Johnson, before we get started.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a item for council. It does not require any council action, but I wanted to put it into the record. Received a hand-delivered letter today from the Rotary Club and Rotary Foundation, signed by A.J. Nash and Mark Adams, with regard to the Rotary Use Agreement for the Community Rooms and an extension or new agreement on that. So there's a cover letter from Amy McLeod with Rotary with regard to putting the record, letter into the record, and so for the record, the, the letter is included as part of tonight's packet, an official record of the council, and we will be bringing this back at the May 20 meeting as an agenda item.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. All right. Public testimony. Whoop, there we go. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have three public hearings scheduled for this evening. The Bai Buah Thai Kitchen Liquor License Application, Resolution Exemption from, of Professional Services Agreement for Carving of Kaiser Cultural History Pole from Competitive Bidding and Awarding Agreement to Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures LLC, and 7C, a Minor Amendment to the Kaiser Station Area A Master Plan. I don't have any of these for public testimony? Or do I? Oh, I do have one more. Yes. Sorry, it got mixed in. Mr. Tillman? I got these mixed up. From Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. And I hope to make mine short, because I'm not as comfortable speaking in groups as my predecessor. Where'd Mr. Ray go? There he is. Oh. So I just want to read, oh.
Would you go ahead and pull the microphone a little bit closer? Thank you, I appreciate it. All right. If you just give your name and city of residence for the record.
Joe Tillman, and Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just going to read, this came from a vote at the last Neighborhood Association meeting, and "Due to the blatant disregard to the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, its neighbors and businesses, beginning in 2020, the Kaiser Fest and its events are no longer welcome in the neighborhood." And I'll entertain any questions, I guess, at that. And I'll entertain any questions, I guess, at that.
Oh, wow, that's quite a statement. Have you forwarded this to the organizers of Kaiser Fest?
I'm assuming that it has not been yet because, uh, the secretary was not, not at the last meeting, and so everything has not been typed up yet.
So that would be something that you might want to send to Kaiser Fest? The permit for this year has been issued?
Yes.
And this has been going forward? And, um, it sounds like there's, uh, some issues to, to discuss.
Yes.
This is, uh, deep disappointing, of course, because this is a, uh, family event that has been celebrated for years in our community.
It is, and we, especially when it first came there, we really thought that this would be a wonderful thing, and it has turned out to be less than so. So, if there are any questions.
Questions. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Although I, I value your opinion, how many, how many people voted?
Uh, there were only four of us at the last meeting. Five?
Okay, so five. I, I value your opinion. I think what needs to happen is a community conversation with the chamber, where it includes all 37,500 residents, to find out what the future of Kaiser Fest will be.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
And I know that we have, that the chamber has, I'm sorry, not we, the chamber has gone to every single business in that area and has worked with about 90% of them to get a positive result. So I would like to hear from them too, okay? Not just from you guys or from one business there. I'd like to hear from all of them, just before I even make a, you know, an opinion or anything about it. But I really think that we do have to have communication. I think there needs to be a community conversation to find out what, what the future of Kaiser Fest will be, whether it's there or someplace else. I think that needs to happen. And it needs to happen not only with citizens of Kaiser, but with you guys in the forefront of that. So I'm going to push for that to happen, and I would hope that, that all of you would, would come and say, and say what we, what needs to be said at that time, so that everyone can hear it, okay? That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. So we received, um, information from Sherri Gottfried, who is here tonight regarding, uh, uh, you know, her issues surrounding the Grass Hut, which is one of the businesses on Cherry. And, um, we had conversations around bicycle pedestrian, which have been, uh, worked through with our, uh, traffic safety folks. So, um, if there are-
They were worked through with Hirsch?
No, with our police department and the planners of Kaiser Fest for how to appropriately, uh, sign and, uh, detour bicycles during the Kaiser Fest. And that has, um, I have the emails that that has taken place. So, um, what I would also encourage is, um, you know, as, you know, your, uh, Neighborhood Association works through some of the issues, um, that we do have a encouraging community discussion with the planners of Kaiser Fest, and, um, see if there is, can be something worked out. I know that with the issues that were raised regarding barriers, detour signs, et cetera, changes were made this year. And, um, that's why the permit went forward, as, uh, it was put together for this year.
And those, those changes were brought about from Sherri bringing in information to the chamber, and they took every single thing that she had drawn up for them, and they've implemented it. So, I know you think not, but they have. I was at that same meeting. I heard that same thing, and I've seen those maps. So I know that they are working very, very hard to try to please everybody and every business in that neighborhood. So I, I, that's why we need to have a conversation. Because evidently, we've got a lot of miscommunication. Bring us all in one room, communicate all one time, and then we can find out how everybody feels about it, I think. I think that needs to happen.
Okay. I agree.
All right, any other questions or comments? We will work together to, um, get together a meeting of the minds and, uh, go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Uh, anybody else for public testimony this evening? All right. Then we will go to our public hearings of Item 7A, which is, uh, for Bai Buah, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing this, um, Thai liquor, Thai Kitchen Liquor License Application. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 3rd, 2019, the city received an application for a new liquor license for Bai Buah Thai Kitchen, located at 5133 River Road North in Kaiser, Oregon, uh, which is the former Quiznos location. The application is for a limited on-premises license. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled. Notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicant and has no reason to recommend denial of the application. In addition, the Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and has no additional comment. It is recommended the public hearing be opened to allow testimony from the applicants or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommend the city council recommend approval of the application for Bai Buah Thai Kitchen under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 in the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and then that recommendation will be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Like to open the public hearing and incorporate the city manager's, um, staff report as part of the record. Questions on the staff report? Seeing none, and I do not have, oh, uh, Counsel Kohler, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Simanka House is within 200 feet. Did we get any, any feedback from them at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But for the record, um, in the past, they have had, um, they have come when we have discussed liquor licenses, um, having establishments that do serve liquor close to the Simanka House, recognizing that, you know, these, this is properly zoned and so forth. But, um, this is something that, you know, some of the residents in, in their facility, um, it is an issue for them, but they try to work very hard with them, um, on their, to be able to have it be a healthy environment for the residents there. Thank you, that was very thoughtful. Appreciate that. All right, um, is there anybody here who would like to speak to this issue? All right, seeing none, I will close public hearing. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council, uh, recommend approval of the application for Bai Buah Thai Kitchen under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 in the ordinances of the City of Kaiser. This recommendation shall then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve, um, recommend approval of the application for Bai Buah Thai Kitchen under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and that this recommendation be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passed unanimously with two absent. That takes us to Item 7B, Resolution Exemption From Professional Services Agreement for Carving of Kaiser Cultural History Pole from Competitive Bidding and Awarding Agreement to Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures LLC. I'd like to open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. As you know, the story poll or cultural history poll concept's been kicking around for a while. The Kaiser Public Arts Commission, K-PAC, has worked on it quite a bit. We ran into problems, um, last year in the summer, I believe it was. We did, uh, requests for proposals at RFP. We got no responses to that. We sent out a revised, uh, RFP, and we didn't receive any timely responses to that. The, um, vendor or the artist under consideration tonight, Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures, submitted a late response, but because of bidding rules, we, uh, we weren't able to accept that. Since we really only have one party interested, the easiest and cheapest way, rather than trying to rebid it, would we do an exemption, which seems appropriate under the circumstances. And so, under state law, we have to have a public hearing to do an exemption from the formal process. As the staff report indicates, it's under the dollar amount for a formal bidding process, but it, it is still over the amount to do informal solicitations. And so before I forget, it's, it's been a, a long process. I want to make sure to thank K-PAC, Kaiser Chamber Foundation, for all their work and their donations here. Nate and, uh, uh, my assistant, who had to do a fair amount of work to kind of get this to where we are, but I think we're ready. So the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and take any testimony, uh, and close the hearing. If there's no questions, adopt the attached resolution, which, um, exempts the professional services agreement and, from the competitive bidding requirements and awards this agreement to Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures LLC. And, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right, Lori Christopher, come on down and talk to us about this wonderful carving.
Don't think I won't.
Lori Christopher, Kaiser, Oregon.
Uh, I would, I, a couple of comments. I hope that Kaiser Little League is able to come back. I, I can't tell you the richness that that brings to the tapestry of our community. It's, I, I mean, I had two kids go through there, and now my grandson just hit a triple on Saturday, three-run triple. We're a baseball family, and, but I can't tell you how that binds families together. So I hope that that's able to be, uh, come to fruition. I'm going to give you the glass-half-full version. Counselor Johnson gave you the glass-half-empty. So as you know, when I left office, I have been involved with the creative side of Kaiser and all of the, all things arts. And, um, the first, uh, we have done a lot of work, Nate and I, visited a lot of artists. And artists and creative folks, they don't intersect and mesh really well with highly regulated, complex governmental policy. I mean, I don't understand it, but the interest was not in, was, their lack of interest was not in the project. The interest was, there were three vendors that came to the planning meetings. Remember, we held five planning meetings where we had the community entered in, and we had multiple ideas. And I know that, that City Manager Epley feels this has been a thorn in his side.
Can, can we stop right there for one second? I, I need to interject at this, at this moment. When Lori Christopher, then Mayor, uh, came to me and said, "You know those dead trees?" I said, "Yes, I'm, I'm just about to call Bill and have them cut down." She said, "Don't do that."
Yeah. It was 11th hour.
I know, and she says, "Give me six months."
Yeah.
And he says, "That's all, that's all I need, six." Okay, hold on, I'm not there yet, because there's a punchline. So, "Six months, I promise, if it doesn't happen in that amount of time, cut them down."
Yeah, well.
"I will, I'm going to hold you to that." That was like six years ago.
Yeah, so let me quote someone we all dearly love and remember. Counselor McGee, how many times did I hear him say, "Public policy and projects don't happen until they're ripe." Apparently, I was naive in thinking that this project would ripen in six months. And obviously, it had a stronger, it had a stronger and longer, uh, ripening date. Yet, here we are. And so Nate and I literally, well, I don't know that you visited all three. I visited all three artists and wanted to find out, what is the problem? First of all, all three artists are in demand. All three artists are busy, and they don't need our silly stuff. And so we then began the long and arduous process of dating, didn't we, Nate? Not Nate and I, but Nate and I with 3D art.
Happy to hear that.
That would be arduous.
And so, we, he has visited, you've visited them twice, haven't you? I've visited them twice. And when you visit them, it's not for a "Hi, how are you?" I was there both times, hour twenty, hour, hour and a half. We know them both personally, maybe Thanksgiving. Anyway, this is the vendor we want. This is so exciting. And you've seen their rendition of what they want to do, and it's really a great concept. And we're going to go forward with one poll. Now, the reason we're going forward with one poll is, I want to remind everybody and everyone that's watching, no tax dollars are being used in this. The, this money was raised by the Kaiser Chamber Foundation and a grant that we received from the Oregon, uh, Community Fund. And so we, I will now raise the money for the other tree. Yeah. The reason it's not all done at once is, we didn't know what they were going to cost. We've had a very difficult time, number one, getting an artist to commit, because they didn't want to follow our complex process, but also to give us a number, to, to put a number so that I could go out there and say, "Here's the finished product." As Counselor Quinn will, or, excuse me, oh my gosh, did I really say that? See, I'm old. I, I, you know, so it's slipping. So, as Counselor Parsons, it was the light on the sign, I couldn't see. As Counselor Parsons will attest, if I've got a product to sell, I know that there are people that will want to contribute to this. And I feel confident, and I know that Nate feels highly confident, that once we have the first poll completed and people see what the whole concept was and what it looks like, I can get the other 10K. If I can't, I know 10 people who'll give a, a thousand each. So it, we will move forward with the second one. But we need to have, um, we need to have the first one done. We need to have a product to sell, and we needed to know what the cost was going to be. We are there now. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're all excited to be here. No one's more excited than I am, so that I don't have to continue to look at Chris Epley. And I just want it on the record, when I commit to something, it may take a little longer, but I deliver.
How do you define little?
This is my fifth year as mayor, just for the record, folks. But-
So, questions or comments? Happy to answer.
We're taking the long view here. Speaking of which, um, yes, this is going to be beautiful. And I think the Arts Commission, uh, what you've done, Nate, and the artists have come up with is absolutely gorgeous. My question's on maintenance. What will it cost us to maintain this once it is complete? And I don't know that, I asked this question in advance, so anybody could answer it. Oh, we got-
Nate can answer it.
If you raise your hand.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Well, I didn't know you were, no, I can answer too. It was in, it was in, uh, informal materials.
So the, the poll will have to be resealed periodically. So, um, there will be an ongoing maintenance cost. We don't know exactly what that cost is going to be. But there will be an ongoing maintenance cost.
So I see in the note here in Exhibit A, uh, the Cobra rods that protect the core will need to be replaced once every 10 years. And we don't, um-
And that, sorry?
And we don't know the cost of that, but the, the artist indicated that the resealing would be about $900 a year.
Okay. Because I know that with our sculpture out front, um, you know, can, cleaning and, you know, putting a new finish on that every so often is part of our ongoing maintenance as well. Um, I noticed recently a bird and, and, um, our, our dear Thomas Dev Kaiser had had a unfortunate interaction. So it's, you know, these, these beautiful pieces, just like all of our public art, need to be maintained. So I just want to, uh, for, uh, you know, the benefit of all of us, to hear how we're not only creating something, but we also have the means to sustainably maintain it, uh, going forward.
Well, K-PAC has a budget. Well, I don't know if they do. If you pass a budget and you maintain the budget that we have, then that is probably something. Does, is the $900 annual?
Nope.
It had to be received.
That was my understanding from, it, it's not in the contract, because we didn't contract for it, but he offered that as a service, and that was his estimate to do it. And my understanding was annually.
I thought it was, I don't think that's right, but it may, I, I don't know. We'll make a call tomorrow, won't we? I, I understood that that had to be three to five years, they reseal, that they resealed it. But regardless, uh, you have generously given us $5,000, uh, K-PAC, a year for the purposes of, um, promoting public art. And so that's something that could come out of those, that funding, Mayor.
And as far as the, um, the preservative, the every 10 years, um, the explanation there is it's a simple process of drilling a core and inserting a new rod. And so it's not a costly, it's not a costly process.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you. Any other questions? So if we, um, go forward with this, um, when does he expect to start?
Nate?
Sorry?
Oh, and I have one more report on the bell.
Oh.
Let's pause.
So, I was given a research project by Nate, and we had thought at one time, because they put, if you look at their ideas, they've got the bell at the top of the pole, and we thought, gosh, wouldn't that be great? If we can dig up the original bell from the old Kaiser Schoolhouse, and maybe we could put that on the top? Well, so it turns out, not only was that original bell, I don't know if it's the original- not only was that original bell, I don't know if it's the original bell or if they replaced it with a replica of the original bell, but that bell is in the old Kaiser Schoolhouse.
No kidding.
And I didn't even, and it rings! I did not believe that it was still there, and when we were at the volunteer event, I made Lyndon show me, in the surplus closet in the theater, is the bell rope, and you all can pull the rope and ring the bell. So, it is in place and working. That was part of that building's restoration, so no, we won't be getting the bell.
No bell, okay.
Nope, but it'll, it'll look a lot like the one, it'll be, he'll have something to look at to carve.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Sorry, I missed a question.
The question was about when would the work start, if we were to approve this?
The work would start, it's basically to be done in the summer. It is to be completed by contract by the end of the year, by December 31st. So, the, the timeframe is pretty generous, but the artists were very comfortable that that would be a generous, that they will be able to accomplish this project within that timeframe.
Because we're all best friends now.
That's how we do things in Kaiser, is we make friends.
And I would just say, once we execute this, we'll get the second one done, and once that's completed, then we'll be back in front of you to talk about cows.
Okay. We'll be moving on.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry? Oh, that's right, I have closed public, anybody else want to speak to this issue? All right. Closed public hearing. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phew, I had to sip that real quick. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, Exemption of Professional Services Agreement for Carving of Kaiser Cultural History Pole from Competitive Bidding and Awarding Agreement to Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures LLC.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. The Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, Exemption of Professional Services Agreement for Carving of Kaiser Cultural History Pole from Competitive Bidding and Awarding Agreement to Oregon 3D Art and Chainsaw Sculptures LLC. Discussion. Counselor Kohler?
Mr. Epley, are you sure you don't want to do some chainsaw carving of your own before that's let out?
I could, I could be an artist. Yes, thank you, Counselor.
So, I, I don't see Mr. Epley wanting to, to protest this award. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with two absent.
Thanks so much.
Carve away. All right. Our third public hearing tonight is for a minor amendment to the Kaiser Station Area A Master Plan. Open public hearing, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown?
Donna Hues Schreiber has submitted a request for an amendment to the Kaiser Station Master Plan to basically amend the attachment that identifies the signs that are allowed in the Kaiser Station. They are requesting the placement of two additional monument signs, and these monument signs will be consistent in size and design with the existing signs there. We have, actually, it's been a bit of a chore getting out all the record for the Kaiser Station and all the process that we have gone through. So, this, as you know, has a long history, but the bottom line is that their request is consistent with the original design and intent. It was never specifically identified that there would be a number that was established as a cap. It was just simply the design as established in the site plan and the attachments that were included there. So, we support the amendment to the Kaiser Station Master Plan. This will be allowed. It will provide additional signage for location identification of tenants within the station, and hopefully will provide additional wayfinding throughout the entire Kaiser Station Area A. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? All right. Mr. Labhart, do you want to come on down, talk to us about the, the project? If you just gave your name and city of residence for the record.
Sure. Justin Labhart, Tuolleton, Oregon, representing Donna Hues Schreiber. And like Nate said, we just took a look at the site plan and came up with two key areas that we felt like needed some additional signage for both current tenants and future tenants. They'll provide additional identification and also directions, which we have, one of the biggest complaints we get at Kaiser Station is finding your way out of Kaiser Station, and, and finding tenants in there. So, hopefully this will help alleviate some of that. So, thanks for your consideration, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Labhart? Oh, Ms. Ferris?
I was wondering if the signs get put in, do you have a plan specifically on where they might go?
Yeah, it's shown on the site plan with the, in the packet.
Thank you.
Numbers 13 and 14 are the new ones.
And for people following on at home, if they're using the electronic packet, it is page 23 of the online packet. All right, good question. And I would concur with that, because members of my family have also indicated frustration. Now that there's more buildings and so forth, it's easier to navigate and know where you're at, but early on, where there was a lot of road and a lot of space, it was a little confusing to try to find your way in and out of Kaiser Station, although we want them to stay, so maybe that was a good strategy. But this would be helpful, in my opinion. Counselor Reed?
And the other way to alleviate that is just go to Kaiser Station more often, and find your way around, and, you know, that's the best thing to do.
There you go. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this issue? All right, seeing none. Closed public hearing. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an order adopting the proposed amendments to the Area A Master Plan approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an order adopting the proposed amendments to the Area A Master Plan approval. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with two absent. Thank you very much. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. Administrative action, Item 8A, is a resolution supporting establishment of continuum of care for Mid-Wilamette Region. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. This matter is back before the council at a recent meeting. You might remember, we had a presentation from the Mid-Wilamette, excuse me, the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative folks, and with regard to the continuum of care model, and based on that and some counselor requests, we've come back with a resolution changing the continuum of care model to a regional model and coming out of the balance of state model, as it was explained at that work session. So, the matters before you, the attached resolution supports the establishment of continuum of care for the Mid-Wilamette Region, including Marion and Polk County, and perhaps Yamhill County as well, and would withdraw us from the balance of states model. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? We're, as, I am the Chair of the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee, so this is going out to all of the signing jurisdictions. In addition, Polk County is not currently part of the steering committee, but are, have been invited to participate in this, and indeed, their commission voted 3-0 to engage in this process as well. So, that was very encouraging. Outreach is continuing to Yamhill County, and we will get an update at our meeting later this month on how that conversation is going. So, this is going to be a very important step for providing appropriate funding and services for people in our community who have the greatest needs. All right, any questions? Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any negative consequences that you can see for us supporting this?
Not for, not for us, for the city of Kaiser, for Marion County. This will have an impact on the balance of state, who is also, that organization is, can, in the process of having to reassess and look at how they are producing outcomes for people in our 28 counties. So, that was going to happen in any event, and I'm hoping that as a part of us, you know, working with Polk County and Yamhill County, if Yamhill County wishes to do so, that this will strengthen our ability to be able to serve more people in our community who have the deepest needs. Balance of State will continue to work on their issues as well. And we will also offer support for Balance of State if they want to learn from how we are proceeding and collaborate. That's a thoughtful question. Appreciate it. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. Did we put a motion on the table?
Not yet.
All right. Now, let's do that. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, supporting the establishment of a continuum of care for the Mid-Wilamette Region and supporting such continuum of care registration with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019, supporting the establishment of a continuum of care for the Mid-Wilamette Region and supporting such continuum of care registration with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2020. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with two absent. Item 8C, Charter Review Committee or Task Force. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. One of the council goals is to move forward with a charter revision, and you might remember that this issue was brought up a few months ago. I've come back with an agenda item to form that committee or task force. Typically in the past, and I've been involved in some and not involved in others some, some long ago, there's been a kind of different ways of doing it with regard to council members or no council members, or a mix, or whatever. It's, it's up to council how you want to form that, a committee or a task force. Typically, task forces are named by the council. Committees, unless the council directs differently, the non-council members are recommended by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, or VCC. I have a recommendation here, but it's really just up to you folks. I'm kind of always in favor of not really large committees, but you may look at it differently. My suggestion is that you have a committee, not a task force, of either five or seven members total, and either two or three of those would be council members. Obviously, if it was five, you'd have two counselors, and if it was seven, you'd have three counselors. But you can choose to do it any way you, you like. It's totally up to council. And then, so the concept tonight would just be a motion to direct staff, and we'd come back with one of our formatted resolutions on the creation of this group for fine-tuning. One thing I did not put in the staff report that is usually not an issue in most committees, but maybe for the charter, you might want to consider that, is whether the members are restricted to electors or residents of the city. Typically, we don't make that an issue, but sometimes for something like this, you might want to consider that, and I meant to put that in the staff report. So, to summarize, the direction that we need tonight is, do you want to set up a committee or task force? How many members do you want? How many should be counselors, and whether or not the members should be restricted to, the term is electors or residents, if you want to make that restriction or not. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions on the staff report? So, our first decision point is committee or task force, and I would concur with the City Attorney that in order to have a more open process, I would very much favor doing a committee approach, where council members would be appointed by me, but that way we would open it up to interested parties in the community to apply to be a part of this. Is there anybody who would prefer to go the task force route? Committee it is. Counselor Herrera?
I agree with you on, I'm not a big committee guy, but in this case, I really believe that a committee would be fine, and I, I'm in favor of seven.
Me too.
Yeah.
And I believe we had a committee one time go over the charter, and I would like to emphasize to make it diverse, so we can have different points of view, because we had a committee before in the, in the past.
Long time ago.
Yeah, in this language, we're still there. So, I guess it's important that we have, you know, different points of view on that. And I, and I, like I say, task forces are cool, but committees are, in this case, I would agree with you on a committee. Although I remember my dad used to say that the camel was put together by a committee trying to make a racehorse.
And, Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, I didn't mean to imply that you have to have three counselors if you have seven. So, you can certainly choose to have two counselors in a group of seven, if the group as a whole, if the council as a whole wants to have seven. Totally up to you.
I'd like to clarify one point, though. We have had a charter review committee in the past, and didn't that predate the election that put the language that, in the Section 44 in the charter?
Well, we've had several, and I neglected, because I had a sheet that, between Tammy and Tracy, worked out, and I did not bring that with me. But we've had several. One, of course, was for the original charter, before we had a charter. There was another one that dealt with the water revenue issue and some other small matters. We did have one charter review committee after the initiative process, but it ended up not making any recommendations for changes. So, it, it, that task force concluded without any changes being recommended to council.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
And there was different groups, as I said at the beginning. It was kind of interesting. One, one of the tasks, charter reviews was totally non-council. There were no counselors on it. Some were, there were some former counselors on it, so, yeah, so it's been done different ways.
That's an interesting thought. Counselor Herrera?
Yeah, the, the, I did some research, I did some research on it, and I believe '92 is when that was implemented, the one in question, the portion that I was concerned.
I believe so.
And then the last committee review, I believe, was '94, and that would have some former counselors, I believe.
Actually, there was, the, the one I was referring to was the early 2000s when Chris was here.
Okay, that's, okay.
Because Chris was involved in that, and I'm, I would say 2002, 2004, perhaps. But that's the one where there was no changes recommended.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Good to have the timeline. So, moving forward, number of counselors to be appointed, there'll be seven positions, is what I heard, unless anybody thinks that we should have a larger group or smaller. So, seven is a good number for decision-making. I know you talked to, up to three counselors. May I suggest a limit of two?
Yeah.
That way, we have five community members. We can cast the net broader throughout the community and get a variety of eyes on. We have a tremendous wealth of expertise in our community, in terms of public process, in terms of government experience, in terms of, you know, cultural experience, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think we have an opportunity to bring a tremendous amount of talent for something of short term. Some people can't commit to two- and four-year terms, but they can commit to a few months. So, is everybody comfortable with two counselors and five committee members to be recruited? Okay. Two, and then five. And the question that these, the folks who are on the committee be electors? Because all of our other committees allow for people who are non-residents to be part of the committees. Like on Parks, we can have somebody from Salem or Tuolleton.
Except for Planning Commission.
Except for Planning Commission.
Right. I don't think we...
And council.
Kaiser.
Yeah, it needs to be Kaiser.
Kaiser.
It used to be Kaiser.
That's, that's...
All right, Kaiser electors, yes. Okay. Any other decision points you need us to navigate here? Mr. Johnson?
I think that would take care of it. Is, is that consensus of council?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody want to make, suggest any additional changes or requirements or guidance for the formation of the Charter Review Committee?
One thing, I'm sorry, one thing I have was, you said the, will the VCC appoint the other five?
Recommend.
Oh, recommend, I'm sorry, recommend the other five for appointment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay. Counselor Kohler? Okay, yeah. So, this will go through the Volunteer Coordinating Committee process. Counselor Herrera?
Just one quick question. How would we get it out there to, besides now, to anybody interested in applying to, for the volunteer coordinating?
Tracy and Debbie will work in the regular situation with regard to the VCC framework in terms of volunteers, get the word out, just like any other committee.
I just want to make sure that it gets to... I just want to make sure that it gets to, you know,
Everybody.
Everybody, you know?
Right.
So what will happen is that a, a resolution will be brought back establishing the committee, and then the recruitment will go out, and we'll all, it'll be electronic, it can be whatever forms we need, and then we can get out in the committee, into the community, and, uh, then the folks who are interested will do, have to do an application and go to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for, uh, their recommendation. Okay? Any other questions? We good? All right. Let's go on then to item 8D, which is municipal judge report. Counselor check-in. Who wants to go first?
Well, he probably has like a two-page report, so I'll just go real quick first.
What, what? Oh.
So, I attended an evening, an evening court. Um, it was, uh, the hearings, and, um, I tell you, the only time that the judge got frustrated was when the police officer couldn't pull up their database with the, the information that we needed to prove the other guy wrong. So what he did, and in fairness to everyone, and to keep our, arguments from happening, what he said was, he would review the matter later and send a letter to him in a week on his guilt or innocence. So I thought that was really good, how he kind of really, because that guy was pretty argumentative, and, and then it was frustration then when, when the police officer couldn't get the thing up, and then the judge kind of got a little, he, he just kind of chastised him a little bit and said, "In the future, you need to have this up." So that's why we really need them to get Windows 10, so they can get this information to the judge immediately during court, because he doesn't want to waste people's time in waiting 15 minutes to pull up a record. So, anyway, um, he, he's always fair. He's always fair. I think he's fair. He listens to both sides of the story, and then he makes his decision. And, uh, I really like him. I like him a lot. He's, he's, I think he's great, so. That's my report, because it was easy. But he's got a couple pages, so I'll let him go. Did you have a question for me? Chief?
No, I don't have a question.
You don't have?
It's not the cop's job to have that information available.
No, I understand that, and he told him that.
Court clerk's job.
But, right. But he said, but he had brought his laptop, and, and he said, "I'll show you," and that's what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. But no, we knew that already. But he volunteered to do it, so. Then he didn't like it, so there you go.
All right. Counselor Kohler?
I have a 27-page report, if
With footnotes? Oh, I like it.
No, this last month I did attend court. It was very educational. The options were clearly explained and the rules adhered to, in an attempt to make it fair and equitable to all involved. I was impressed as I observed the patience. The officers and the judge showed while listening to arguments and testimony in many cases, pursued in open court, even when it was plain the accused was manufacturing a yarn in their own very least stretching the truth, very least stretching the truth in attempt to
More excuses, though, than I've ever heard in my life.
To judge a fire, judge
More than my kids ever had, though, are the excuses.
Do you want to read this?
No, no, bro.
Because he was able to pull it up.
Yeah, I know he was.
Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, "They were very professional and compassionate to those deserving compassion. A very difficult task, performed very well." I, I am concerned about the lack of security, uh, in our, in our judge chambers. Uh, there were some people that were pretty argumentative and could be, could have been a volatile situation, and we don't always have an officer here, I'm told.
We do. I mean, every time I've been here, we have.
Well, I've, I've been told that there's not always an officer here, but most of the time there is. But I'm, I'm just concerned about security of our, our judge and the other people here. And, I mean, there's, there are no metal detectors, there's no rules that say none of this, and, and so I, I'm just a little concerned, but that may be a discussion for another day.
Chief? Would you like to respond, just so for, so folks who are listening know, um, what the
With regard to court security? With regard to court security, you mean?
Yes, please.
Um, we used to pay to have a, paid overtime to have a cop here during every court session. That didn't always work out, um, so, for the past five years since I've been here, the administration has taken responsibility to, one of us sits in here. Doesn't cost the city anything, costs us our time. But, uh, I do recall one time, about two months ago, when, uh, one of us was scheduled, and for some reason didn't make it, and, uh, the rest of us didn't know, but the courts called us. So I think it's generally, we keep a pretty close eye on it.
Well, I think the concern is too, though, is like, if there's only one officer here, and he's, happens to be, uh, the police officer with the guy that's up there, or whatever, they're sitting next to each other, and how is he going to know if the other person? So that's why I guess I'm, I'm saying is
Yeah, it's been that way for 150 years.
Okay. Then I guess nothing's going to happen.
Since 1982.
That's less than 150 years, but we'll take it.
But, uh, thank you for, uh, raising the question, and, um, it's good for people to know what the, um, you know, how we are thoughtful about, uh, safety and security for, um, all of the participants in the judicial system. So I appreciate that. Um, thank you both for taking your time to, uh, sit on, in on the court proceedings. Rather than do a formal evaluation, this was implemented a few years ago to, um, help us better connect with one of the three, uh, positions that are directly appointed by the, or directly report to, the, uh, city council, which is the municipal judge, the city manager, and the city attorney. So, thank you both for doing that. Well, and the recommendation is says, um, "Does the council deem necessary to hold a formal evaluation between council and the municipal court judge?" So may feel we need to move forward with that, or to have two more people attend court within this next fiscal year for, to report next spring?
Two more people, we don't need a formal.
Counselor Reed?
Um, I, I like the model that we're currently doing, because it, it gets all of us kind of a chance to see it at, at different times, and, you know, we do two a year, and it just kind of gets us all in the courtroom itself, uh, rather than some, uh, a, a formal evaluation would be, um, I think, a little bit less authentic. So, I like the way we're doing it right now.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So by consensus, oh, Counsel Herrera?
I agree. I agree with that, and I have a court date coming up, so I can do it while I'm there, if you want to. Not really, not really.
Not really.
But, and you know, when I got the chance to do it, I got, I got a good perspective, and I really think that all of us need to go through that, so we can kind of, not only appreciate, but kind of know what it looks like from, you know. And Dan brought up a very good point, although I, I, um, you know, I went, you know, about the safety part, and I, and I'd like to see Officer Winning do that with the judge, you know, that little program we did, where we know what to do. I would like to see that do, uh, extended to the judge. But, that's another discussion, like you said, that, uh, yeah. I agree with, uh, Officer Reed. Officer, Counselor Reed.
All right. Thank you very much. So we will proceed, um, as we've been doing, and two more counselors will be assigned, and I think I already did that in my appointments, uh, in January for this upcoming year. Thank you both. All right, that concludes the administrative action portion of the agenda. Let's go to consent calendar. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's three items on the consent calendar. The first one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with R. and R. General Contractors, Inc. for Lockhaven Drive Northeast to 14th Avenue Northeast improvements. B, approval of the April 15th, 2019 regular session minutes. C, approval of the April 22nd, 2019 work session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? Seeing none, Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with two absent. Uh, Counsel Liazon reports. Counselor Herrera, how about you launch tonight?
I'm sort of kind of ready. I, I just wanted to, um, thank, uh, Tim for the wonderful job, and Chris, for the wonderful job of, uh, helping us do the, once again, through the budget process, which every year I get closer to, uh, understanding more and more, although it's still complex, but I, I, I do appreciate the time and effort that's put into that, and, um, you know, I get those, I believe there's 22 people involved, and I, up to all those involved, uh, I appreciate their time, because it does take, uh, and thanks to Tracy for the great food that brings. Uh, okay, also, um, uh, Cal Club, I want to appreciate, I want to thank Officer Kenniston for coming over with the canine. What's the dog's, your dog's name, uh, the Latin, the new one? You don't even know? I, I said the dog's name, and he says, "That was 12 years ago, Roland." So, of course
Is it Buddy?
Yeah, well, anyway, uh, he did a great job. And by the way, is it Buddy?
I thought, I thought it was Buddy.
I, I don't remember, but But get that back to Scott, because he did a great job in interacting with the kids, having them all come up, even take pictures and all that, and that's a big, big deal for Cal Club, so. I appreciate that. We also had a, uh, C-Tech, um, luncheon this week, and, um, uh, where we talked to more kids that are doing just a fantastic job, you know? Uh, I just, I can't get enough of that whole program over there, so. Um, May 1st, uh, I walked in here and I witnessed, uh, something that was really cool. They had the Parks people here, um, and they had about 40 kids on the, um, community input meeting for the skateboard thing, and it was just impressive to watch these kids, uh, engaged in something that was really cool. I mean, I walked in here, I saw these guys, you know, skateboarders, and I'm, uh, uh-oh, what's going on, you know? And I walked in, and there's a, the guy doing that great presentation, and the Parks people, and so was, um, Mr. Johnson, and I, I just kind of observed there, I was, one of the kids I, I mentor work with goes in here, and, uh, it's good for him. He needs something like that, and he's really into it, so. I want to appreciate the Parks Department, or whoever put that together, it was very well-done. Uh, Dennis Koho's mom passed away, as you guys know, and I appreciate Dan, uh, um, doing his thing over there, and that was very, very nice, Stan, and, uh, uh, then, if you didn't know Dennis's mom, her name was Delight, and that's, uh, that's pretty much what she was, and she was a, um, pretty feisty. I said, I, I always remember sitting by her at a winter banquet, sports banquet, and I tell you what, she just cracked me up. I mean, she was like, very incredible. Anyway, she passed on, and it was very nice. The last meeting we went to, at the Points of Interest, Hall of Fame with McNary, we're working on the next, uh, one for this year in October, and then, um, Cinco de Mayo, I went over and, uh, to Portland and had a great time with her, uh, exploring our culture. The, um, let's see, what do we have also? We had the, uh, the, um, signing fair coming up on May 20th for C-Tech, and for the Departments of Law Enforcement, Business, Drones and Video. So, Mizianos will be part of this. They will be doing a hiring fair, where people come in, and, um, and that's will be part of it. They had the first one, I think, today, I believe, but I missed out on that one. I will be there. Also, um, I got coming up, Parks, uh, coming up, and Gupster Neighborhood Association coming up this week. Uh, Friday, May 31st is our, uh, Salem Foundation's, uh, the breakfast and lunch thing, the delight, fancy breakfast, they call it, at the convention center, I don't know, you either go to breakfast
Foundation? That's on the 31st?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's
Uh, I got 21st on my
Oh, I thought you said 31st.
Okay. Yeah, I said 31st.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. And then on May 25th is, um, I will be attending the Cultural Institute of Oregonianos, which is a first-year, um, conference here in Salem Library, uh, I think it's Salem Library, and that's, uh, with the Mexican consulate, with, uh, certain agencies here, will be doing a little festival there on cultural awareness. Also, um, what's the last thing I had here? Oh, yeah, Jim Fairchild, I don't know if, who, if you didn't know him or not. Most people knew him as a, as a city councilor and as a mayor. Was he once or twice mayor?
Uh, two or three times.
He was mayor more than once, I know that. But anyway, uh, I, I had the fortune of meeting him back in his football days, when he was assistant football coach, and that's when I met him, and he was, and I saw him the last time, he looked kind of, he looked weak, but I always remember the, 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 that great sense of humor he had, and he always brought that, that, um, that style that I really liked, and he was a good guy, so he'll be missed. That's another guy we lost this week. Uh, what's the last thing we had? Oh, yes, Thursday, we have our, our event, and I hope you guys can make it. It's not a big event, it's a small group of people, it's, uh, 16 students, who will be, uh, all awarded, uh, and this, last week, we were fortunate to get a, uh, a retired educator, uh, and her, uh, she wants to be anonymous, but, uh, she's a, a lady I worked with for many years in education, uh, and, um, she is committed to donating a thousand dollars a year to our project, and, uh
Wow.
And, um, Mrs. Richardson from, um, the school district, diversity thing, she's going to be there, and she is talking about implementing our program to the whole district. And we're pretty excited about that, because it started right here in Kaiser, and this is our second year, and, um, so we hope you guys can be there. It's not a big deal, it's a little fun thing, because, uh, we just honor these kids, and I want you guys to experience, it's pretty fun, so. Most of you guys were here last year, you don't want to talk about. That's pretty much it for me, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I attended the Kaiser Little League Task Force meeting also, but Matt gave that report, he did a wonderful job. Um, great job on the budget, staff, Tim, um, and I know Ron Burson did a good job as chair, and Laura, good job, so I think everyone worked well together, and that's how we, we just got through it. And they, we didn't even have to use the word status quo, and that's what I really liked. So, uh, tomorrow I have a stormwater, um, here at City Hall, um, uh, so the Latino Business Alliance, uh, Roland's going to go for me on Thursday, I was unable to go, um, and then, uh, on Thursday, I will be at the Latino Action Committee, uh, dinner reception. I was there last year, and it was fantastic. All those kids are just wonderful kids, and they sure appreciated getting something. You know, a lot of times you just don't get scholarships, but to get something, whether it's a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, is, was, was a very, um, humbling thing, I think, for the students, to know that they deserve that. Um, the Kaiser Fest kickoff party is Saturday night. Um, remember they're doing that during it a week before, or five days before, or whatever, so it's actually Saturday night at the tent, um, kickoff party. I think it's adults only, is what I saw? Okay. Um, so that's, that is Saturday night. Um, and then coming up, uh, no, uh, coming up, uh, the, have my little thing, uh, City Needs You. I know I bragged one time that we were full, that lasted, what, two weeks? I bragged one time that we were full, that lasted, what, two weeks? So we have one opening on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, we have one opening on the budget, even though we don't meet until next year, you can still get your application in, sooner the better, we can get it filled. Stormwater, you know, and this is an important time with a stormwater because we're working on our permit and we could use, you know, we could use a couple more people and their knowledge to help us through this process, so that would be great if we could get somebody doing that. And then vacancies usually start in September through December on various boards and we never know till sometimes the last moment whether someone's going to, you know, want to do it again, so if you're interested in any of the committees, keep your eye out on the website and then always put an application on what you're interested in and we'll certainly, when those vacancies come up, we'll certainly call you and have you come to the volunteer coordinating committee, so that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a Kaiser Festival Advisory Board meeting and that went, went very efficiently. Yes, so mostly we talked about the Kaiser Fest and what's going on with that. We had Volunteer Recognition Day for the Kaiser Cultural Center and a good turnout there and just always amazing to see the quality of and quantity of volunteers that show up to support our various organizations and so that was a really, an excellent event. I also have the Stormwater Committee meeting, looking forward to that. And also there is a Red for Ed Day coming up, which is, and there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding about this, so I kind of wanted to clarify. What this is, is it's a demonstration down at Riverfront Park, everybody's wearing red for Ed and it is, has nothing to do with teacher salaries or campaigning for anything like that, it's mostly to show the state legislature support for education dollars, so it's not just teachers wanting higher salaries or whatever, it's, it's more of a, more, more general, let's support our education, let's, let's make sure that we take care of the programs that we have and make sure that we are serving our kids in the best way possible, so that event is happening Wednesday at, I believe, 1.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday and it is 1.
I believe it is 1.
I think it is 1, so, and that's at the Riverfront Park, so I just wanted to clarify that because I know there are some misconceptions there. Planning Committee meeting, I'm going to be attending for President Freeman, or Council President Freeman, and also the Commissioner's Breakfast on Thursday. I am going to be going to the Marion County Housing Initiative, I believe that's either Wednesday or Thursday, and participating in the Career Day at Weddell Elementary, a few of us are doing that. I will be going to the Latinos in Action Scholarship Program, looking forward to that, really proud of our kids, and of course we have the Kaiser Fest Parade coming up and so we will be decorating that float and going to do our best for that. And also Kaiser Homegrown Theater is opening Who Am I This Time and that begins May 9th and goes for the next three weekends after that, so that will be a fantastic performance as well, so come to the Cultural Heritage Center, see what's there and check out that performance. The showtimes are Friday, Saturday at 7:00 and then Sunday matinee, so that's how that is generally working. That's all I have.
All right, fantastic. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There've been all kinds of things happen in the last few weeks and I'm sure I'm going to forget some things and some things, but I very much enjoyed the soggy day in the park, we had a lot of fun. Mr. Lawyer talked about a lot of people, I had a big list of all the people that helped and such, but there, there were a lot of people that really played a big part to make that happen. And then attended the homeless initiative, have a lot of respect for and appreciation for former Marion County Councilor or Commissioner Janet Carlson or Tardos efforts in this area. Wednesday, the 24th, I helped with and attended the Kaiser Community Dinner. I'm continually impressed with the number of people willing to do so much to make such a great event possible. There are a lot of people that don't live here that sacrifice a lot to come and help with that. One of our main cooks drives from Lebanon every month to do that. He just enjoys doing it. Also attend Kaiser Little League Complex Task Force. And then Wednesday I was at the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, they agreed to commit in doing another soggy day at the park, as Matt reported. Also Wednesday was the Carlson Skate Park Advisory Meeting. I was surprised by the large number of people that were here and impressed by their, their willingness to share and share input and the positive meeting that it really was. And then Thursday I attended the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I appreciate the effort that she put in to make that all possible, it was a very amazing and very nice event. And then have a Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday. Wednesday, don't have anything yet on that. Marion County Commissioner's Breakfast, 7:30 a.m., I get that one, and then the business, Latino Business Alliance, not the business, what do we call it, Latino, anyway, that meeting and the awards banquet.
The, in the evening, the Latino Action Committee Scholarships?
Right, now, as long as that doesn't conflict with my traffic bike ped committee meeting.
It's going to overlap a little bit.
I will make that.
I'll save you some goodies.
What time is that? Yours is at 6?
6:30.
Oh, 6:30, so it will overlap a little bit.
Yeah, so there's all kinds of neat things going on, so I appreciate the efforts of everybody to make it, make it all possible. Ted Nagness, that was another one that passed away, this, so, it seems like we've, we've lost a lot of really great people lately. I was very honored, Mr., former Mayor Coho asked me to officiate at his mom's service and that was a very humbling and a very neat experience.
All right, you with Counselor Ferris?
Okay, so as Counselor Reed had said, the teachers will be having an event on the district site, it had said it was related to the Day of Action Rally that's also taking place along, around the country, so school will be a cut short day, around two and a half hours cut short, and the rally is at 1:30, I believe. So it's also Teacher Appreciation Week, so the leadership is going to be providing lunch for teachers on both lunches on Friday, so thank you teachers for doing your best and just working to give us a great education. Spring sports are going to have lovely weather this week based off of the forecast, so have fun, good luck. Distinguished Young Women of Kaiser will have their performance at Day Spring on May 11th, so if you guys would, it would be great for you to come and support these amazing young women who will be representing Kaiser. On Saturday at Western Oregon, CTEC's Oregon Gaming Project Challenge Team will be presenting their video game for judging along with, I think, over 50 teams from Oregon and Washington, so if you guys want to see that, it's, I believe, a free event, so. Senior Signing Day celebrations are on the 13th during both lunches to congratulate those taking the next step into college. And on that note, so far seniors have reported around 5 million in scholarships, so congratulations.
Well done.
Five million plus, yeah.
And we're aiming for by the end of the year to reach last year's, last year's, well, of 8 million. So the, let's see, I think the, one of the last parts of this is there's a state band championship on May 18th from 8:30 to 9:00 p.m. And Treasure Island is McNary's spring performance and it's right around the corner, it's on the 16th through the 18th and the 23rd through the 25th, so it's never too early to start buying tickets, so I'd encourage you all to go and support our McNary thespians.
All right, I just made a couple more notes and between (laughter), there's a lot of theater right here, you know, I've got my season tickets to Kaiser Homegrown and definitely enjoy all the performances over at the high school, incredibly talented young actors. I'll just add a couple of things here. The Midwillamet Homeless Initiative Steering Committee did meet on the 25th and thank you for passing the resolution tonight, that will go back to the council governments to be added to all of the other ones as part of our packet to be able to continue the work toward the reestablishing our continuum of care for this region. Drug Tank Back Day wasn't mentioned, that was on the 27th and I believe it was over 180 pounds of unwanted medications that were turned in to the police, so they are properly disposed of, you know, please, please, please never flush those, the fish really don't want your meds, they don't. But there's always a way for anybody during business hours to come to the police station and drop off any unwanted medications, we have a drop off kiosk in the Kaiser Police Station, but thank you to everybody who brought their unwanted medications, making sure they're properly disposed of. On Monday, the 29th, I went to Bend to participate in OMPAC, which is the Oregon Municipal Planning Organization Consortium. I represent the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, our local MPO or Metropolitan Planning Organization, and we get to meet with MPO representatives from around the state, mostly we're discussing some of the issues surrounding transportation funding and also updates on transit funding and how that is going to continue to evolve, not only for Salem-Kaiser Transit, but transit agencies across the state as more of the funding through the State Transportation Improvement Fund comes into play. In September, on September 3rd, I believe, is when Saturday service will return to Salem-Kaiser Transit. And also the service will go later in the evening on weekdays, so for people who get off later, work later shifts and so forth, transit will be available and this has been a long time coming and I'm very proud that our Salem-Kaiser Transit has worked hard to prepare for this change. When the funds arrive, they're ready to hit go and that's going to be a wonderful improvement for so many people in our community. Coming up on the 8th is the Volcanoes Advisory, look for some great stuff coming to Volcano Stadium. The College All-Stars game, if I remember correctly, is June 12th, so summer is coming. Commissioner's Breakfast, got that. Weddell Elementary, some of us are going to be over there for Career Day, talking to the students about the careers we have, both as volunteers and as, in our day jobs. And this Saturday's Coffee with Kathy, so come on down to El Patron between 10 and noon. I'd love to visit with you about your ideas for how Kaiser is, can be, and how you want to get involved. The Kaiser Fire District Mother's Day Breakfast is this Sunday, Sunday morning, so if you don't want to cook breakfast, take mom over to the fire district and have a great pancake breakfast. The Kaiser Heritage Center Board will meet on the 14th. The SEDCOR, which is Strategic Economic Development Corporation, will be meeting, their board will be, will be meeting on the 15th and I believe it'll be here at the, our civic center, so they're trying to get the board out to some different communities and also meet with any staff who's available on, to meet the new director, Eric Anderson, and also what's coming for our economic development in our region. Looking forward to meeting with everybody there. And the McNary Groundbreaking will be on the 17th at, I believe, 9:30 in the morning and this will start the great construction project coming to McNary High School, so it's going to be awesome and it's going to be a mess, so everybody just hang on, it is for a limited duration and the outcome's going to be worth it, so everybody just be patient from, from then until it gets all done and we cut a ribbon and go woo-hoo, it's all open. So September, or, sorry, wow, May 17th, 9:30 in the morning, and then the next day, speaking of patience, River Road will be closed for the Kaiser, the Mary's Pep Parade and then of course the Kaiser Fest Parade, so come on down, be prepared to just come and enjoy the parade and then do all of your errands in your vehicle after that. That's all I got. Nothing happening. So let's go to other business, this time it's provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim?
Chief?
Nothing.
Bill?
Nothing, I think, Chris.
Can I, I'm going to back up to that one, 14th Street.
Yes, ma'am.
So we, we did pass a resolution tonight relative to that project.
Uh-huh.
When is it going to go to construction and what kind of things can people expect on Lock Haven during that process?
Well, I don't have a schedule yet, but we expect the contractor to start right after school gets out and they're to be finished before school starts in September. I will say, I would expect fairly minimal disruption to traffic because for the most part they can work off the edge of the road, take up the bike lane, so there'll be some impacts to bicyclists and pedestrians, but for as far as vehicles, they should be able to keep both lanes open and active pretty much through, through the project. There will be a short time during the signal changeover because there's a signal head or post and mast arm that is being replaced, has to be relocated, so there'll be a short time there where it's flagged and, but still traffic will be moving through the intersection. And as soon as we get hard schedules for all that, we'll put it on our website and let everybody know what's going on.
Okay, so for bike ped, what are the plans there?
I don't know what their plan is yet. I don't know if they're going to try and keep something on that side of the street or move them, I'm not positive yet, but we'll work with the contractor to get something safe and, and usable for everybody for the short duration of the project.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor, Bill too. So Bill, there's been a little bit of chatter on Facebook about the construction happening on River Road, you know, with the ramps, and the biggest complaint has been is that the contractors, when they're finished, the lane closed ahead sign was, is never taken away, so people are like causing extra traffic jams that don't need to be because they see the cones, but they don't realize that lane's not closed, they're, they're gone for the day, but they left those signs up.
Okay.
Is there a way that we can have them turn them over or knock them down or do something?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll talk to them tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Nate? Counselor?
Nothing here also.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, written communications, there was an article in the Kaiser Times and I did receive a wonderful note from two students who took it upon themselves to adopt a park, so I wanted to read this letter. We are Hannah Wonderly and Nicole Snirbush and we go to Whittaker Middle School. We want to propose the idea of an adopt a park program in Kaiser. We want to do this because we want to help the environment. This program would include picking up trash, making sure animals are thriving, planting new trees and making sure the parks are taken care of. We ourselves will adopt Sunset Park and Wallace House Park. We have already picked up 12 and a half pounds of trash at these parks. Signed, Hannah and Nicole. And first of all, I did send them a note thanking them for this, this wonderful note and I also wanted to note there was a post on Facebook from the Kaiser Times talking about and some pictures of them and what they have done. I also encourage them to get involved, thank them for being involved with volunteerism and to keep going down to that park. We have talked about formal adopt a park programs in the past and I don't know if it's something we want to take up again or ask the Parks Board to talk about how we might do this formally or informally and invite neighbors and students to adopt parks because this is in their neighborhood.
That's right.
So I will send this on to the Parks Board for their, so they can see how they can creatively deal with this, all right? But well done, well done to these two students. That's all I have for written communications, yes. Agenda input, May 13th at 6:00 p.m., we will be meeting for a work session on the Cost of Growth summary and we're going to be receiving that report to read in advance, or is this going to be mostly a presentation, Mr. Brown?
It's mostly going to be presentation. There's, as you know, we're still in the process for a lot of this, but we do have some information that I think is important for the council to incorporate into your thought processes. We have a statement from DLCD that we'll be reviewing, we also have the preliminary stuff from what we are getting out of the Buildable Lands inventory and just kind of, we just kind of want to set the stage for the larger discussion that is to follow.
All right, okay, thank you very much. And then May 20th at 7:00 p.m., we will meet in regular session and then again June 3rd, 7:00 p.m. in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Counselor Herrera?
Yeah, one more thing along with the, to Counselor Reed, Wednesday's event at 1:30, if anybody here on the council is applying to attend, let me know and I'll get them a t-shirt from the OA, I've got, I've got a bunch of them, and I've got all kinds of sizes, so.
Yeah, and it isn't just teachers, it's anybody.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that it's not just teachers that are going down there, it's anybody interested in supporting education.
It's for education, too. But anyway, so if you need any t-shirts, let me know and give me the size and speaking of red, support our Blazers who are in there, so.[1772.12][1772.12](laughter)
Quadruple overtime.
Throw that in there.
What was that about? Oh my gosh.
Yeah, that was amazing, thank you.
All right, then if there's nothing else, it is 9:02 and we are adjourned.